All good, okay. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Herzog.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Mayor McFetrich.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February fourteenth meeting?
So move.
In a second.
A second.
Any corrections? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and approval of the minutes for the February twenty eighth special board meeting, the budget workshop.
So move.
In a second.
So.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. So we have some members of the community here. It's so nice to see you too. Thanks. And Jimmy too. Yeah, you have some ideas?
So I was thinking that, you know, the basketball court, it seems fine at this point, so maybe we could get some other courts down there instead of building a basketball court like, like pickleball courts or tennis court or something would be cool for the community, because I know like the closest ones are all the way in Rouse's Point.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I, tell me what you think about this. You know, behind the, the play equipment, there's kind of an open space.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just talking about that today.
Yeah, so, and then over to the side, sort of by the community garden, that, that side?
Yeah.
Maybe something over there?
Yeah, that is perfect.
So our challenge is, it, it's doable. Our challenge is, it's flood buyout land. So we have to use a kind of concrete or cement that allows the water to go through. So we just would have to find funding to help us because it would be expensive. But I think that's an awesome idea.
I really enjoy spending pickleball, and he was explaining to me today that if you put two pickleball courts next to a tennis court, it's the exact same size.
Okay.
So two pickleball courts are the same size.
Equals one tennis.
One tennis court. And then the nice thing, as you had mentioned the last time before COVID about volleyball, but the nice thing about pickleball is it's not just for teenagers, but the younger children can, can play it as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Now does it, I haven't played, it looks like fun though. Does it definitely need fencing to keep the ball in or?
Well, I mean, if there's grass, I'm sure the ball will like bounce and then like start to die on the grass. I mean, just like a fence, even just like, you know, like waist high would probably keep the ball in for the most part.
Okay. All right.
Because it's just like a wiffle ball, really, it's kind of like the bounce, that's how it would bounce out.
Okay. All right, that's a great idea. Yeah. Anything else?
Nothing I can think of right now. Also, I think about it more the front next one.
What, what did you say that it was a flood, um?
It, it's FEMA buyout property, so we can't put anything in there that wouldn't allow.
Permeable, it's gotta be a permeable, um, surface.
Terminus.
And there is, there is something.
Yes, but it's expensive.
It's expensive, but you know, maybe we could put a couple of grants together. There's actually one grant opportunity that's out there right now that I don't know if we'll cover all the cause, but a portion of it anyway.
What, do, do you know what other types of tennis courts there are? I mean, I'm not super familiar with that, but I know that there are other courts other than just tarmac or asphalt courts. There are grass courts, mud courts, things like that.
I'm not too familiar with either.
There's clay, clay courts.
I feel like that would be a lot to.
It'd probably be tough to maintain, too.
Yeah, I think the river washing over clay might not be very good.
Too bad years ago, the, the Champlain Elementary went to granted that courts to the village. You know, they just kept.
Yeah.
Just, no, no, we're gonna use them, we're gonna use them, and now they're.
They're not usable anymore. I did ask the owner a few years ago if we would let us use them, but he, he didn't want to at the time, so, too bad. They have trees growing in them now.
Now, these grants, is that something that the signatures would be required by the youth of the village, or?
Um, letters of support maybe. You know, if, if the village could, we could write the grant, but sometimes if you include letters of support from other community groups, it gives more credence to the application. So under the Boy Scouts, for example, yeah, that might help. Yeah. I'll be in touch. Support, have any questions?
No, I think it's a good idea. I think in the past, that's been a thought, but again, it's the funding, it's a big issue.
Yeah, you know, when we did the downtown revitalization plan, that area we had thought of having as the ice rink, which we still could do, so it could be, because the area that we have the basketball court doesn't freeze super well, it's kind of, you know, got a low spot. But we still could do that. We could freeze that in the winter and use it as the pickleball tennis court in the spring and summer.
Yeah, because the only thing would just be there would be a coalsper net, but those might be able to come up too. I don't know how that works too well.
Yeah, I'm sure there must be some way to do that. Yeah. Is that a dog? Oh, you got anything else? No, that's great. Well, thank you. That's a wonderful idea.
Well, we'll see you next month, and hopefully Holly can join.
Yeah, that would, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, yeah.
See if she has my thoughts.
Sure, yeah. All right. I really appreciate you coming. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you, are, sorry, are you a Boy Scout?
Yes.
Okay, are you an Eagle Scout or?
No, not yet though.
Okay, okay.
We have some Eagle Scouts in town. Dakota Frank just made Eagle Scout, Richard McGrath, we have a meeting tomorrow to approve his Eagle Scout, and Andrew Biscotti's an Eagle Scout.
Okay. How is, I'm not, again, I'm not super familiar with how the process goes, but there's, what's the final, there's like a final courseway or a pathway, the last final project, I can't remember what it's called, is it the Eagle Scout project or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, we talked about doing something in the village and that stuff, and something I'd be interested in, something around here.
Yeah, because he'll be ready probably to do his project in about a year. You have to make Eagle Scout before your eighteenth birthday, or you can't.
Okay.
So he's just, he's fifteen and a half, so he still has some time. He's still looking to do something in the village.
We could talk about ideas.
I'm sure you have a million ideas.
I do. Well, I don't know about a million, maybe a thousand. Yeah, something that you really enjoy doing, yeah. It's a great program.
Yes.
Thanks for your leadership in that, too.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's why I'm still a Cub Scout leader, because we don't have Cub Scouts, there's no Boy Scouts, because it's, you never find boys enjoying sixth grade.
Right, it's a feeder program.
Yes, absolutely. So actually Jen and Tony Motson are, she's the chair and he's Cub master, and their, their, their boys are Boy Scouts, so they're running Cub Scouts, and then I'm the committee chair for Boy Scouts and a leader for Cub Scouts, just to keep it going and not going out.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. Such a good program.
It is.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you later. Uh, report from the codes enforcement officer. Chris let his report with us. Don't know if you have any particular questions.
It just seemed like saying things over and over again a lot.
Yeah, yeah, there's certain places that keep reappearing. Some of them are in, have been into the courts. Any questions at all? No?
Church Street is just, sorry, every time I'm here, I always think that I'm on Church Street, but it's just down the street, probably two houses from the, from the church, right? The one that we talked about before, asking them to board it up last meeting.
Oh, he was there when I came through.
And he, he has been, he has been reboarding parts of it and said he would board the rest, but I believe that they're going to do, start the demolition in a couple of weeks.
He knows there's a trailer parked up front.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, who's the guy that got the demo for it?
Uh, Rodney.
It's Rodney, yeah, yeah. So I think that one.
He was there when I came through.
Okay.
So.
He's starting to do something.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that will get cleaned up quickly. So hooray for that one. Okay, my report is short. Good evening and happy spring, well, almost. It's been a long winter, and let's hope that warmer weather is right around the corner. We continue to be plagued with water main breaks. I believe it's been seven since the beginning of the year. Our engineers are continuing to work on the design of the replacement project, and we anticipate hearing about funding soon. I realize that this is a difficult situation for many of you, as you deal with a lack of water while the break is being repaired, and boil water orders. And in addition, this creates very, very tough conditions for our village employees. A lot of stress, a lot of long days and long nights. And I thank all of you, the residents and the employees, for your patience. As I said last month, this is a project that we are going to tackle, and we are going to get this taken care of. We're not going to go on forever fixing these water main breaks. We're going to get some new lines. We do have a number of events coming up in the village in the next couple of months. International Slow Art Day is on April second at 1:00 PM at the Champlain Meeting House. Photographer Bill McDowell is going to be displaying his photographs and speaking. As I mentioned earlier, I received a grant to offer a series of exercise classes for seniors. And the first one will be chair yoga on April eleventh at eleven thirty AM. We'll also be celebrating Arbor Day again on April thirtieth at one. And I am happy to announce that the Village of Champlain was selected as a Tree City USA for the fourth year in a row. A final reminder that village elections are taking place tomorrow from noon until nine, right here at the village office. Although the incumbents are running unopposed, please, please exercise your right to vote and stop by. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Kim?
Okay, the only thing that I wanted to talk about was the information regarding the letter from the town on the water board report. So I'd like to, I'd like to do up a draft letter back to the town, going over a few of the issues. I mean, some of it was just repeat information that I'm not even sure why it needed to be in there, but one of the things that I wanted to know, and I don't know if we had made a decision on it, and I do need to pass it by the water board, is the two tanks. I know that the village had said that they would want to, would be interested in sharing the cost of the tank maintenance, but the town also threw in here to share in the insurance cost of the West Service Road and Prospect Street towers. So I don't know if that's, if that's something that the village wants to do. I mean, to me, that's, I know it's part of a cost of doing business, but I don't know if that's something that, I don't know if that's something that we would be doing or should be doing.
Yeah, and I don't know what the cost of that insurance is either.
I don't, I don't either. So what I can do is I can contact Sarah tomorrow.
Yeah.
And ask her for that. I'll, I'll get the insurance on, see if she can give me a breakdown of both towers separately.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, we, we should, you know, pay for the insurance. I mean, our, our tower that's in the village.
We don't, we don't.
Neither one of the new towers is in the village.
Well, they're not in the village.
They're both in the town.
Okay, that's true, it is just outside the village.
Yeah, they're both in the town.
Well, we pay for the water plant.
But in the IMA, I think they're supposed to have, there's something with insurance in the IMA with the town, I believe. I don't know that.
I don't have the IMA with me.
And do we put the, do we put the insurance, does the insurance fall under the operation and maintenance costs or not?
Well, see, that's what.
I don't think that's added in there.
Okay. So those are things we need to find out.
Okay, so.
IMA stands for what?
The intermunicipal agreement that we signed between the town and the village on how we, you know, handle costs, share costs. There, I'm not sure there's something about the insurance in there, but I don't, I, I'll have to reread it.
Yeah, oh, and I did not bring mine with me. And I know we did discuss that this really is not anything that should go into the O and M. It needs to be a separate contract.
Yeah.
We don't want to keep opening up the O and M and adding this and taking out, and oh, we should do this differently. That, to me, if we're going to go forward and do this, then that needs to be a separate contract written up between the town supervisor and the mayor, and I think it needs to be a joint venture doing that.
Tom and I had talked about that, and my first question was, okay, who's, who's drafting it to start with?
Okay.
So I, I don't know, I don't know that.
Okay. I'll ask him if he's done anything with that. Thank you for a copy of the water, water laws. How do, are any of our laws public, like, are they on the website or anything where I could direct the town to go look at them rather than having to scan that and send that to them and say, this is it?
We don't have those online right now.
Okay, well, then what I can, what I can also say in that letter then, once we get some other answers, is I'll do a draft letter, and then give it to the water board to look at first. And then that is also one of the things that, you know, yes, we do have a law in place, and if you're interested in seeing the law, then we can certainly send it to you, to view.
Or we could photocopy it, and you could insert it with your.
I could.
With your letter if you want.
I could. I don't know what their water law looks like. I, I just feel that, you know, that, that if it's within the village, the village needs to be taken care of it. It's outside the village, the town needs to be taken care of if they know that there's an issue with water being stolen or not properly being used. So, but.
Yeah.
I can. We can send that.
Okay.
I know that apparently Mike and, Mike and Chris are working on a Googles document, Google Sheets, so that they, it can be viewed regarding the water testing. The town was also saying that possibly we could do something like that for hydrant flushing. I, I don't see where that's relevant. The town doesn't do any flushing, the, the village does all of the flushing, so I don't think that, that adding extra work to our crew that's already stressed to the max, creating another document, that's, those are figures that'll be included when Mike sends his document to the water board. So I don't feel that that's relevant
I agree.
to have another document that's.
Yeah, it's not.
Really not relevant.
It's not, it's not needed, and we don't need our guys to be doing any extra work.
Okay. I totally agree. Email addresses have already been given to everybody. And then the unaccountable water loss, that's where they were asking about the, the law. So we do have a law in place, so. And I know this letter was also shared with the water board, so I will draft a, a letter. I want to give it to the water board first, saying, okay, this is, you know, the village, we've talked about this, and these are the things that we're looking at, and I do, I'll look at the IMA also, see what it says in there about insurance. And then I can ask the supervisor if he, how he thinks, if they want to start the process for that contract or.
I would think they would, because the towers are in the town.
Right.
And probably their lawyer would start it, and then we'd get our lawyer to review it and come to some agreement, hopefully easily.
Right. Right. But I guess before we do that, then we need to look for the insurance portion in the IMA and see what it says.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I will look at that, and I will try over the next week or so to do up the draft and send it to the water board.
Is the water board meeting again soon?
No, we weren't gonna meet until May, because two of our members are in Florida for the rest of the winter, and we can do a Zoom meeting, but that's.
Yeah.
Sometimes as a, and I think, I'm not sure, I don't have my dates here, but I think we're due for some.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I thought. So if I'm March fifteenth.
Just haven't, just haven't finished them yet.
March fifteenth just sort of rang in my head, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Great, thanks, Kim.
Uh, first thing is, this coming Sunday, the twentieth, at one PM, we're gonna have another game day at the meeting house. Everybody's welcome. So like to have as many people attend as like, you know, we had a good turnout last time, and we'll see what we'll have this Sunday. It's, it's fun, it's only gonna be hour and a half, two hours, so it's not a long event, but it's something to get the people together and have a little fun. A couple of the things, it's just maybe things that we could do if time, as time permits. One is, I notice on the front of the building especially, there's a lot of stuff on the top part of the building, or the soffit is, and he's, like cobwebs and things like that.
Out here?
Yeah, on the top. If we, maybe just, if we got time, maybe take a few hours and you just wash it. And if it needs painting up there, it's white, maybe just a little bit of painting, just, and it's not a large project, but it's something that could be done if we had some time, if possible. Just a thought. And, and I don't know in the past if, if we ever had this, but like a village-wide cleanup day for the residents just to go around and, you know, in their neighborhoods or something like that, and kind of clean up, you know, maybe help out some of their neighbors, just clean up, you know, around the streets and things like that, just maybe take a little less work away from our employees and things like that, that I'm not saying that they're gonna be putting a lot of trash out to be picked up, because we, we don't do that, but just, you know, the normal things that some people may not be able to do and.
We usually do that as part of Arbor Day. So we do a, like a, well, a more of a litter pickup, where people take different streets and walk around and do that.
Right.
I don't know if that would tie into what you're thinking.
It could. You know, it's probably about the same time of year, you want to do it in the spring.
End of April, yeah.
Mike has mentioned spring cleanup. Do you have any idea of what, around what time you guys usually make it an effort to do that kind of work, like general cleaning stuff?
Usually start in April. Cleaning those streets.
Streets and.
I think a, a volunteer, a volunteer day.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Is there, you know, a, a place that, like a central place that trash could be brought that could be so, you know, inevitable if we do pick up trash, we do clean place up, do we have a place to bring the trash?
Yeah, what we've done before, we tied in with Earth Day and Arbor Day, because they're both at the end of April, is we just gather at the playground, hand out the garbage bags, people take different streets and neighborhoods, and then they bring it back there, and then we bring it here.
How about like, um, street sweeping and like the sanding, stuff like that? Is there equipment that the, the village uses, or is it just kind of?
You know, we use a lot of equipment, but it'd be hard to put.
The public can't take.
Public in the streets.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, you know, what are the things that we could get people to do voluntarily versus what do we have to do for the village-wise?
rake in front of their house.
Yeah, rake in front of their house, pick up the litter that's there from the winter. Subranchers.
Really raking, raking the ditches in front of their homes for the water flow.
Not raking stuff into the ditches.
Right. Outfalls of ditches.
Are all really good ideas that would be helpful. Yeah, you know, maybe we can do it as an Earth Day activity and, you know, call it a village-wide cleanup.
You've been doing that for years over people.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I see the garbage in the back once in a while.
Yeah, yeah, I have been, but, but yeah, we can maybe do a better job of publicizing it.
Yeah, more people maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I usually get a pretty good turnout, ten to fifteen people, yeah.
Well, United Way, and I've been away from the United Way for a while now, but they always did a United Way Day, Day of Caring. And I know when, when I worked at YF, we went around one year and we cleaned, we cleaned where the, the park, where the gazebo is in Rouse's Point, and another group went to the library and cleaned at the library. And then I think some went to, like, maybe it was the civic center or something, and there was, there were quite a few employees that participated in it, and we just took a different area, like some of the public properties that, you know, might need more assistance. I say public, but I mean, like the library and, and things like that. Not private businesses, but.
I'll have to look up that date again, I've done that too.
I want to say it was April, maybe in April, because I remember the last time I did it, I had a long sleeve t-shirt with a t-shirt over it, so it was, it was a decent day.
Sometimes we get employees from like some of the local banks who want to volunteer. I remember a couple of guys did that area over by, oh, South Street, over by Transporter, that gets so dirty.
Yes, yes, in that corner.
That corner. Actually, yeah, I actually did a community cleanup there last year too, but there were some bank employees that did that area one couple of years ago.
Community bank?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they usually have a.
So we could pull some of our, our businesses in too.
Sure.
Yeah.
Maybe even denim or fettle crap, and sometimes they do.
I was just gonna say that.
They do something. Yeah.
All right. Not hard to organize. I think we can pull it together.
If you could put it on the water bill, if people want to donate some time, they could call, write it down.
Yeah, you could, yeah, it's a good idea too.
Yeah.
Bring a few more people.
We always put little messages on there.
Okay, great ideas, everyone. Anything else, Joel?
Listen.
Joel?
Um, so I was gonna reach out to Mike and hopefully schedule some sort of way to walk through the facilities, whether that be the water, the sewage, or really anything that he found notable, just some of the day-to-day stuff, just so I can get an idea of what, what goes on every day, so that I can, you know, kind of get an idea of really what's going on, so. If anybody was interested in tagging along, I know you said that you might want to look at the sewage.
The water, Joe, both, both places.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'll stop in sometime this week.
So Woody's the one you should talk to.
Woody, okay.
Yeah, he's the water plant operator and the wastewater plant operator. He's happy to give tours. I've gone with him several times.
Yeah, it's nothing, nothing serious, it's not, not.
No, it's a fascinating process, though.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think it's easier to get an idea of maybe some of the concerns or ideas or things that they might have when you're walking through it and doing it, as opposed to just, you know, hey, you know, asking them what they might think or what they might, you know, it just might not come to mind, so.
What's your schedule, Joel? Are you?
I'm pretty much free. I mean, I work different times throughout the day. Today I work from like six to four, so, you know, sometimes I'm working throughout the day, other times I'm not.
Oh, okay.
So I'll try and do it sometime in the early afternoon. I mean, whatever, whatever's accommodating to them the most, I would imagine, I just fit it into their schedule, and then whatever fits.
Yeah. I would, he does his rounds in the morning, so I would guess early afternoon probably be best. I can mention it to him tomorrow, but I can also give you his number.
Yeah, I'll, so he's not here, at, at, here at the village office, correct?
Well, he comes in every day.
Okay.
Yeah, he comes in every day, but then he does his rounds at the, at the plants.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get his number from you, and I'll, I'll give him a call, and then I'll send an email, you know, a carbon copy to everybody, if anybody want to tag along and let you know when it is.
Yeah, that's great.
Beautiful.
Anything else? Anything else? Thank you. A report from the clerk treasurer.
Everyone has their expense revenue reports for February. I can hold them all.
For the most part, let's see, we have a quarter left, right? So we're at twenty-five percent left, um, for the most part, I think we're doing okay. Does anyone have questions on the detail of expenditures? Remember Juanita's famous line, "Look at the bottom line."
Yeah, don't worry, second half, boy, look at the bottom line.
Sorry, I panicked. She said, "No, look at the bottom line." Oh, okay, yep. All right, do we need to take care of these transfers first?
Um, yeah, before we do the abstract.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna do them separate?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mike got the majority of the parts for the the snow plow. So we have to transfer um, to A fifty-one forty-two point two, snow equipment, two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. From A fifty-one forty-two point four, snow contractual, twenty-six twenty.
Yeah, motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We make the transfer twenty-six twenty from A fifty-one forty-two point two to A fifty-one forty-two point four.
In a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Connor, or, yeah, that's right. Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Okay, and now we have to pay the town um, our share for platform at the water plant, which is seventeen thousand seven fifty-three twelve. Um, so we're gonna transfer from fund balance F five ninety-nine to F eighty-three twenty point two, sources supply seventeen thousand five fifty-three twelve.
Do you have a motion?
Some.
In a second. Okay. Discussion? That's just, that's our portion of that platform, which.
Right.
I saw pictures of that.
Um, is really amazing how beautiful it is and how, well, yeah, I showed, I'll show you the pictures later, Joel.
Yeah. Can you show me the pictures?
It's uh, he's so talented.
Is he working on it this week?
He is. It's done.
Oh, it's done?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize it was done.
Oh, I'll show you the pictures, yeah.
Yeah, it looks great.
It looks great. It's, he's just so talented, so creative. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Okay, and then the warrant, we have additional invoices of twenty-two thousand nine twenty-seven eighty-two. For a total warrant of forty-two thousand one fifteen oh six.
Do you have a motion?
Some.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I heard a little bit. I don't know why I hate.
Any, any questions or comments about any of the expenses?
Well, I just have one question.
Mm-hmm.
So on the form or the sheet that has the transfers on it.
Mm-hmm.
We have an invoice.
Oh, those are, no, those are separate, those are out of our project funds.
Okay, so you're just making us aware of them or is it something?
Yes, yes, no, we have to, we have to do those too, because just to keep.
We're gonna come back, okay, we're gonna.
Okay, but I was looking for them in here and I'm like, I'm not finding them.
No, 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 those are our separate projects.
Okay.
But I figured it was easier if I did it all like this.
Mm-hmm, yeah. No questions on anything here? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Okay, so now back to the uh, the projects.
We have water main replacement invoice for twenty-three thousand thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. Which gets paid out of the water project fund.
All right, a motion to pay that out of the water project fund?
Some.
In a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
And we have one out of the wastewater treatment plant, disinfection and improvement, for thirty-eight thousand nineteen dollars and fifty cents. To be paid out of the sewer project fund.
Do you have a motion for that, please?
Some.
In a second?
Second.
All right, uh, questions, discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
All right, on to the report from the superintendent. Mike left a, a lengthy report. They've been super busy and off and down one or two people. Working hard and overworked and in my estimate, estimation, it's been rather stressful. Do you have questions or comments on the report? Can see we had two water main breaks. Uh, the one on Moore Street took uh, days to find. Once they found it, it actually seemed like it got repaired rather quickly, but they were walking the, they were walking the land all over the place. As usual, under equipment, there are several things that are being repaired or need to be repaired. I am going to read Mike's comments um, under streets, because I think this is for the general public. I wanna make sure everyone understands this, so to those of you watching, this is from Mike Jolker. "I'm still having issues with people leaving trash cans roadside or on the sidewalks. These cans can be put out the night before pickup, but need to be pulled back out of village right away once pickup is complete. I continue to see trash cans that were left out all winter. This creates issues with cleaning streets and sidewalks when they are left curbside. This is a code violation and for the habitual offenders, don't be surprised when you receive a citation. Reminder, do not park on sidewalks, near crosswalks, or near stop signs. I've had a few residents that I've delivered a violation about parking across the sidewalk and it continues to happen. If this continues, I will have to have the vehicle towed at the owner's expense, just as the paper I dropped off to you stated." So these are things you need to do, take care of it, make it easier to get these, these things cleaned up. How does, how does the board wanna handle some of these uh, these comments at the end of this report?
Do you think we need an executive session to discuss them?
Possibly. Possibly.
Yeah, I think that'd be the best.
All right, so um, can I have a motion to go into exo- go out of the regular session, please?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and a motion to go into executive session?
Some.
And a second, and a second from Chuck, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, let's go in the other room for just a few minutes. Do you have a motion to go out of the executive session, please?
Some.
In a second?
Then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and a motion to go into the regular session?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, okay, let's see. Correspondence?
Okay, so any, any, any discussions, any?
No, no dec- no decisions, uh, no vote will be taken. Oh, I think I need to state what that was for, so the meaning, the, for executive session, I have to state a mea- a reason, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so personnel. All right, correspondence?
Um, correspondence to residents affected by FEMA's changes in the floodplain in the village. Correspondence from Nick Malinsky regarding wastewater credit. Correspondence from Champlain Town Court regarding Steve Trombley's case. Correspondence from Attorney Murnane regarding Court Gay for Powers' case. Correspondence from Attorney Murnane regarding disposition of Steve Trombley's case.
Okay, and your new business, first we have the wastewater credit request from Nick Malinsky at one-one, one-one-two-three-six route nine. And we've got the re- yeah, we've got the request here and then I.
Okay, there's a memo in there, we should have a memo.
Let's see. Yes, so, yeah, so here's the memo, Mary, load this up. Did you, did you copy that water credit policy that?
Yes.
Yes.
We have to pay that. I asked her to do that, because I wasn't sure if um, you, Chuck and Joel, knew what the policy was to, to grant a credit. The situation here is that Superintendent Jolker could not confirm that the water from the break did not enter into the wastewater system. Um, because um, he had observed that the sump pump was connected to the sewer line. And it wasn't draining outside, which would mean that it was going into the wastewater system. So I don't think this fits our criteria. For giving a credit. Kim, you wanna, I know you understand this credit, you wanna add to this?
Um, yeah, if it went into the wastewater system, then it was being treated.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
If it's being treated.
We can't give a credit.
We can't give them a credit.
So when there's, when something happens and water goes, say, out of the ground and it doesn't go into the sewer system, then it's not being treated. And so then we give a sewer credit, because it's, the sewer i- uh, cost is based on the water usage. But then the water doesn't go into the sew- the sewage, but in this case, it, it sounds like from what Mike saw.
It had already been taken care of and done and I think, once he got there, if there was any, had been any water on the basement floor, it was not there.
Right.
And when, when it, the, the break was fixed, and I think it was a hot water leak, but I'm not quite sure. Um, it had been taken care of and then, when Mike went to look at it, that's what he saw.
So Mike.
He had pictures, he didn't, he didn't find them, but that doesn't matter, that's what he saw.
Okay.
Was that, it was connected to the sewer.
So we took, we cannot confirm that it, that it did not enter the wastewater system, it sounds like it did.
And by our policy.
We're gonna have to.
We're gonna have to decline it.
Yeah.
If it went to the sewer system, then it was being treated again.
Yeah.
So is there two things to this? The water and the sewer are separate, or is all one?
Well, it's all based on, on the, the bill for the water and the sewer is based on water that goes through the meter.
As far as. Well, I know that, yeah, I'm just saying if, if, okay, all right, cause the water was used.
Right.
And then, and then it did go into the sewer system.
Right, in this case.
So, in this case, so what if the water was used, but it didn't go in the sewer? You still get bill for the water part, but not the sewer, correct?
Correct, you give a credit on the sewer portion, correct?
So what Mary will typically do is she will go back and look at like, two or three readings and say, they usually average about this. But now they're like ten thousand gallons more than what they normally are. And Mike went and took pictures and there was uh, broken garden holes outside and it was leaking out onto the ground. My, one of my kids left our garden holes running one summer and my water bill came in over a hundred dollars more. We didn't have a credit policy back then. The water ran and it cost us like a hundred bucks more. But um, in that case, if we'd had that policy, I could've asked for a sewer credit, because the water literally just ran out onto the ground, down the driveway. Down the back of the house, I should say.
So, to be clear, this is basically asking for rebate for the sewage portion of the total bill. So you have the water and the sewage, asking for rebate on the sewage, because the water was never treated, it was only just used in the water being used.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Except in this case, it looks like a sump pump was hooked up into the sewer.
Into the sewer.
So it doesn't fit the criteria.
Now, the sump pump was.
Yeah, I mean, the third one, the third, credits, quote credits will not be used for common household events that result in the water draining into the wastewater system. Examples will be leaking toilets, dripping faucets, et cetera. And that would seem to fall under a sump pump leaking to the system.
Yeah. So do, we need, I think we can have a motion, yeah.
A motion to approve. And then vote as you wish to vote.
Oh, okay, you can't have a motion to not approve?
I guess you could do that, I think.
Okay. Someone wants to make a motion, you decide which way you wanna make it. Um.
I mean, I, yeah, I don't know. I, I guess I, I just wanna gauge the general consensus. I mean, that seems like a honest, honest mistake, I don't, I, I don't really know.
But this is a very cut, it's very cut and dry with, with policies for sewer, for sewer credits.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Um, un- unfortunately, um, if you want a motion, I, I make a motion that we not approve this credit. Because if it, it went to the, to the sewer system, it was treated again, it doesn't follow the criteria.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, further discussion?
So, to be clear, the motion is to not approve it? So a affirmative vote is to say, no, we don't want that.
Yeah.
motion.
Any other comments? All right, uh, I guess we need a roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Con- Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Uh, water rate increase. We talked, uh, we've, we've talked about having to uh, raise our rates slightly, they have not been raised in several years. Our water account is, is getting a little low and of course, we've had a lot of overtime, a lot of expenses. So I'm recommending that it go from um, five twenty-five per K gal to five seventy-five per K gal. Which um, that increase, I think will add about five dollars per quarter to a um, average uh, residence bill. How does the board feel?
I'm agreeing with that.
Could you repeat those figures again?
Yeah, so it's currently at five twenty-five per thousand gallons.
Okay, and we want to do five seventy-five?
And we, yeah, I'm recommending five seventy-five. And I believe that will be about, about, depending on your water usage, about five dollars per quarter for a, a household. Of an in, five dollar increase, depending on your usage, of course. I don't like to raise, really don't like to raise anything, but the only way we can pay our water expenses is through water rates. So we don't really have too much of a choice. Is this something we just, do we vote on it?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, okay. May I have a motion?
I make a motion that we raise the water rates from five twenty-five per K gal to five seventy-five per K gal.
You have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I think it's an unfortunate reality.
I, I completely agree with you.
Understanding that the pipes have to be fixed.
Yeah.
Well, everything's been going up unfortunately and
Yeah.
this is another case where expenses are going up.
Nothing good found.
I know. The, the chemicals that we use, I mean,
I know.
They've gone up steadily every year.
Oh, yeah.
Some years have been drastic jumps.
Yeah. Uh, roll call?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mary McCutcheon.
Aye. Uh, floodplain changes, I just wanted to really explain this, um, to the public. It's, it's, I think all of you read my letter. Um, so FEMA redid the floodplain maps. They've included more of the village, um, in those floodplains. Primarily, it seems to be affecting Cedar Street. I believe there were a couple of buildings on Main Street or Route Nine that weren't included previously, but Cedar Street has been included. And we have seen some flooding there. We haven't had any in quite a while, knock on wood. But, um, according to FEMA, that's now part of the floodplain. So residents or owners of those buildings have the opportunity now to buy flood insurance at a lower rate prior to these going into effect. You're going to save some money. So if you're in the floodplain and you've got a letter explaining that, you need to look into getting this flood insurance to save yourself some money. Just want to stress that. This is the time to do it, prior to the map being approved. If you have any questions at all, call me. Uh, I'll, I'll explain it as best I can.
May I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So when this letter was sent out to people, was there also something that was encompassing the streets that, and, you know, were considered to be part of that floodplain?
Yeah, it was two specific addresses. When the county sent it, um, Mary had little stickers with the address on, right on it. And then she also looked up who the owners were because many of them are rentals.
Right.
So they both got notified.
Okay.
Correct, Mary?
Yep.
Yeah. So I, I really hope that people do take advantage of it, um, while they can get a lower rate. We need to set a public hearing for the budget. Remember, our organizational meeting, um, is the first Monday in April, so it's April fourth is our next meeting. We need to set a public hearing for the budget at that meeting. I would say that we would probably do the public hearing early in the meeting. That's always a long meeting anyway. So, um, I don't know, six forty-five?
Yeah, do that right away?
Yeah, so I need a motion to set the public hearing for the budget.
So move.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Do we want to mention the, the request for Woody to purchase under new business, um, to purchase six barrels of phosphate for the water plant? At a total of four twenty-five per barrel. He purchases six barrels for two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars plus freight and it usually lasts about three years.
And do we have a question about the shelf life? I mean, I'm sure
That's why he does it, yeah, that's, this lasts three years and it does have, that's why he does it.
And it has a shelf life of
Correct, correct.
Up to three years at least. Okay, all right, so this is something we have to have. Um, may I have a motion to approve that purchase? A second? Second, Joel?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Mary McCutcheon.
Aye.
Thank you, Anita, for bringing that up. Under old business, the sale of the property at the Perry's, the Perry Mills Road. I can fill you in just a little bit on that. Um, I did call DEC and all of my questions, he said, talk to your lawyer. Talk to your lawyer. So I did, um, I talked to our lawyer and he said that he felt that we could sell it as is with the stipulation in the contract that someone buying it is buying it with the knowledge that people used to dump things there. And it could be sold as is. I don't know, I'd like to hear how you all feel about that.
Well, I'm fine with that.
I mean, DEC is not going to come in and, and do some, some drilling to find out what is in there. They said that's, that they're not going to do that. They don't do that. So he just said, you want to make sure that you're covered legally. And the lawyer said he felt we could sell it as is.
And there will be something, i- if someone is interested in purchasing it, there will be something in there that they can never come back on the village
Yeah.
because we've given full disclosure as to what we know.
Yes, correct, and what we don't know.
Well, what, what is it that we know?
So what we know is that, that, that was used as a, as a common dump where people would drop their, you know, probably, I don't know, probably in the thirties and forties. They dropped their tin cans, glass, there's an old car, uh, there's a mound of junk. It's clear, it's, I've been there.
Yeah.
We don't know that there's anything that is contaminated, anything. I mean, there's full foliage around there. It doesn't look like anything's been poisoned or, or ruined. I don't see anything running into the river. But we don't know for sure what would be underneath everything. So that would have to be clearly written out.
Yeah.
Do you want to continue with this then? Because I do think there are two people who are interested and I don't
I would say yes.
I don't know if they're interested with this.
So did they say anything in regards to the, the DEC? So they said they wouldn't test. They weren't, they weren't interested in testing, but what happens in the eastern area that they are interested in testing?
No, he said they wouldn't just come test. If at some point there was some, someone saw some, I don't know, dead fish or something, if they came, they had to come for another reason and they tested. We would want to make sure that if we had sold that, we were legally covered for not being responsible prior. But he said, no, they don't come out and just randomly test something because we think maybe there was something there. So should we proceed?
As long as we are legally covered and I, I don't have a problem with it, but man, we need to be sure that our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted and the lawyers got us well covered.
So why don't we, um, talk to the two people who are interested and explain where we're coming from? And if they agree, then we would have the lawyer draw up the very strict contract.
Right, because if they said, no, the village needs to take liability, then I think it just needs to end right there.
It's gonna have to just sit there.
Yeah, it'll just because I, I would not want to see the village get into a legal battle over something like that.
Okay. You know the two parties? I think.
Yes, yes.
Do you mind reaching out to them and just?
Yes, I will get the contact information and
Okay.
I, I know one of the gentleman's name, the other one's not coming to forefront right now, but
Okay, all right. Any other comments on that?
It's all honest.
Yeah. Uh, and then the water plant, uh, platform, we talked about that briefly. That is installed, um, you'll see it on your tour. It's a beautiful job. Modern mechanical is extremely talented.
Oh, my gosh, I guess so.
I'm, I'm so impressed. It's great and a super local business.
Yes. Very community-minded as well.
Yes, they are. That's all I have. Anyone else have anything?
What was the time for voting for?
Nine, all right, noon to nine.
Yeah, noon to nine.
What, what is, is that something we have to do?
This was from this is from February fifteenth.
Well, I, I didn't know, something that we we addressed before?
Yeah, an unsafe building, we already did that.
We did that, yeah, we did that last, that last night.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.